Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome you all to the Town Hall meeting. My name's Walter Kroll, and I'm the President of McKnight Neighborhood Council. So I'd like to welcome everybody. Just some quick housekeeping. Fire exits, obviously you have one right here. You had the entrance where you came in. Bathrooms were right on your way in, here on the left as well. If you have a cellphone, please put it on vibrate so that we can all have, hear each other and whatnot. So I'd like to just thank everybody. I'm very proud that Jessie asked us to participate and host this. Obviously Jessie lived in the neighborhood, was part of the Neighborhood Council, so we were pleased to be a part of this and help host this. So I'd just like to welcome all the city officials and welcome all of you. I think this is important. It's important for them to hear our voice, and I'm glad that Jessie initiated it, and you see so many officials here that have come to listen. So without further ado, I'll introduce your moderator, Shanique Spalding. Shanique?
Thank you so much, Walter. Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for being here today, and thank you to our elected officials who are here to answer some questions for you today. I'd also like to thank Focus Springfield, who is live recording this event. If you would like to watch the livestream or the live-recorded event later on, make sure that you go to youtube.com/FocusSpringfield. Also, we encourage you to go to Jessie L. Letterman's page on Facebook and make sure that you livestream this event or post any pictures from this event that you'd like to post or any feedback on the evening as well. I'd also want to take this moment to recognize some folks that are in the audience right now. Ahmad Rivera, if you could, who's here as the aide to Senator Ed Markey. Thank you so much for being here. And Tahira Amotul, who's running for the first congressional district. And to Jose Delgado, who's here representing MGM, who you might have met on the way in. And without further ado, I'd like to introduce next Jessie Letterman, who is the at-large City Councilor, recently elected in the last election, who was sort of the individual who was ambassador behind this public forum today. So Jessie?
Well, thank you very much, Shanique, and good evening. Thank you all for being here with us tonight. It's great to be home here in Mason Square in the McKnight Neighborhood, and to be joined by so many of my colleagues and by residents and neighbors from across Springfield. I want to take a minute to thank the McKnight Neighborhood Council for supporting this event and hosting it here in the McKnight Neighborhood. The McKnight Neighborhood Council has a long history of bringing people together for public forums way back when we started, while I was a board member, the Public Debate Committee, bringing elected officials to the neighborhood who were running for office. And now we're excited to be bringing elected officials to the neighborhood after they've been seated in office to hear concerns from neighbors. I also want to take a minute to thank our moderator, Shanique Spalding, and I think you should give her a round of applause because she's got a big job ahead of her this evening. And Shanique is joining us from the Hampden County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls, and we want to highlight all the great work that that commission is doing. We know there's several other commission members here this evening from that body, and we're glad to have you all here with us. During my campaign for the Springfield City Council, and I think my colleagues would echo this, we heard from residents across Springfield that they were really eager to see engagement from their elected officials throughout the year, and tonight we're here answering that call. This is just one, the first of several Town Hall-style meetings that I plan to bring together across our city, and I am thankful that so many of our colleagues have joined us for this event. We have representatives from the City Council, the School Committee, and the State Legislature here to take your questions, and we are looking forward to hearing those questions, your concerns, and ideas. I can't promise that we will have all of the answers for you tonight or all of the solutions to every issue, but what I can promise is that we are here to listen, and I know that this dialogue we share here today will inform our work moving forward. I also think it's exciting for us to have a chance to hear from residents. For those of you that followed the City Council election, you know we held, I think, ten or twelve debates across the city, and so we did a lot of talking, but here, we're here tonight to do some listening. So thank you all very much for joining us here, and we're looking forward to moving through the program.
Thank you so much, Councilor Letterman. So I'd like to just take a moment to allow the elected officials here to sort of say who they are for a brief thirty seconds. Please introduce yourself, your role, and any short comment that you might have. So we're going to start on my left here with all of our City Councilor members, starting from Councilor Hurst.
I'll defer to Councilor Twigs.
Oh, there we go. Hello.
I am here.
I'm also very short, so I cannot see past people.
That's your problem, Shanique. Nothing I can do about that. And of course, you're in my district, so I take this opportunity to welcome all of my colleagues from the Council and from the School Committee and from the State Senate. I thought I saw my senator over there. Welcome you to this forum, and in addition to those folks who have come here to listen at politicians run their mouth. And we're being recorded, so you can rest assured, they're going to do a lot of that. I'm me, Henry Twigs, of course, and I represent Ward Four and Mason Square District, and so I'm very pleased to be here with you this evening.
Thank you, Henry. My name is Justin Hurst. I'm an at-large City Councilor. I'm in my fifth year, and it's great to be before you when it is not actually in election season. So you won't hear from me as much as I'd imagine that you'll hear from some of my other colleagues who actually have races. And it's also good to be before you and hear your concerns. I think oftentimes, you know, we talk about bringing government to the community, but we don't necessarily see that happen. And so kudos to Jessie, kudos to InFocus for taping this, and, you know, I hope the residents out there who are viewing this will be pleased by the answers that we have for them.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Orlando Ramos. I'm the President of the City Council, represent Ward Eight here in the city. It's a privilege to be here with all of you. I keep it brief because we are here to hear from you, and so, but it is very important to me to work together with the community. I always believe that the government works best when we work hand-in-hand with the folks in our community, and so it's a privilege to be here. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Councilor Marcus Williams, not to be confused with Councilor Justin Hurst. I represent Ward Five, the Ward Five. I represent Ward Five in Springfield, which encompasses sixteen acres Upper Hill as well as Pine Point. I also chair the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee as well as the Dock Park Subcommittee that was just newly formed. And I want to also extend a thank you to everyone in this room, despite the weather, coming out to be engaged, to engage your elected officials, to share your thoughts, your concerns. We certainly are keeping abreast of what's going on in this community, and I want you to know that I think there's a new, it feels like a new age in Springfield, to me at least, and I hope that you share those same sentiments. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm City Councilor Caterie Walsh. I am the Vice President of the Springfield City Council, and I want to thank my new colleague and neighbor, Councilor Letterman, for inviting me to participate in this important forum because I think citizen participation feedback is the lifeblood of city government, and thank you all for coming out.
Thank you, Caterie. My name is Adam Gomez. I'm the Springfield City Councilor, representing Ward One, which is the North End, Memorial Square, Brightwood, Lower Liberty Heights, and the downtown metro. It gives me great pride to be here in Mason Square with all of you today, despite the weather. I understand that sometimes the weather will keep you at home. These type of forums, I like to applaud my colleague Jessie Letterman because these types of forums are the forums that are necessary to make sure that your concerns, the constituents of Springfield, it gets back to City Hall. Because I know sometimes it's difficult for you guys to make it all the way downtown, so that's why we've got to bring it to you and listen to what your concerns are. Also, I'm a candidate for the Hampden District State Senator, and I'm looking for your support September 4th. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Bienvenidos. Welcome. My name is Denise Hurst, and I am your Springfield School Committee at-large member. I was recently elected this past election season to my third term, and I'm very excited to have the opportunity to represent the best interest of all of the children in our city. I actually sit before you as a resident of Mason Square. When I was growing up, I grew up right across the street from AIC on College Street, so like Jessie, it's good to be home, although I spend a lot of time in this area. I think that during election season, I think it was my husband over there who mentioned it, we spend a lot of time at a lot of forums and debates, and we do a lot to make sure that you understand who we are. So I think it's really exciting tonight to be here to understand your concerns and your issues. And so thank you to Jessie Letterman for putting this on to Focus Springfield and to the Civic Association. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Latonia Monroe Naylor, and I am an at-large representative for the School Committee here in Springfield, and I am just honored to be here in Ward Four. I grew up on Eastern Avenue, and so I always enjoy being around my Kenfolk. So thank you so much for allowing us to be here today, and I just want to hear what you have to say. We want to know what your concerns are. We want to know what you're questioning, and if we don't have an answer on tonight, we want to find out an answer for you and get back to you. I believe that the key to success in our city is our educational system, which is why I'm such an advocate. I just started Parent Villages Initiative on this past Saturday, and we're looking for that to continue to grow and be something that we can all participate in. So I'm just, again, here for that purpose, just to learn more, and if you have any questions even after this, we look forward to hearing from you then. Thank you.
Hello. Amalo Brown, Legislative Aide to Budell Williams. Basically, if you guys don't know what an aide is, when the representative isn't around, I represent him fully. And I definitely, on this particular occasion, I ask, I request to come out here. This is my neighborhood. My grandmother, I live maybe two doors down. I definitely would like to give a big shout-out to Liz Steven from the McKnight area. She's definitely calling the State House, getting things done. I think she calls us every day, almost. But her passion and her commitment to the community, she definitely keeps us on our toes, and I definitely want to give a shout-out to Liz Steven.
Good evening. My name is Jim Welch. I'm the State Senator for the Hampden District. Good point about Liz. We had some good news just the other day that was announced as well about the grant too, so we're very, very pleased about that. But it's great to be here with all of you. It's great to see so many people come out and be part of these type of forums. Obviously, the more that we can hear and have direct input from our constituents, our friends and neighbors, the better off and the better prepared we are to do our job. So happy to hear, happy to be here and look forward to listening to all your questions, concerns, and hopefully we'll have some good answers for you, and as was stated before, if we don't have the answer for you tonight, we'll certainly do our best to find it in short time. So thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. We're going to move into the moment that we've all been waiting for, and I want to give you some quick pointers on how the rest of this evening is going to go. The format for tonight is that individuals will line up at this mic over here. If you are on this side of the room, just be cognizant that if you have a question, you need to be over here. If you think of your question, just to keep the flow of questions going, just make sure you try to start lining up as much as possible on this side of the room in front of the mic. You have one minute to share your comments, questions, or concerns, and then elected officials have about thirty seconds to respond. If you have a particular question that is directed to an individual or a particular office, please make sure that you do so, and also introduce yourself and what neighborhood you're from. I think that'll be important for folks here to know, in case they want to follow up with you in your own neighborhood. And that's about it. All right. I'm going to be keeping time, so please make sure that if you have your questions or comments or concerns or thoughts that you want to share, that you try to keep within the one-minute mark. I'll do a three when you're at a thirty-second mark, and just be cognizant of that, and also elected officials, we're going to try our best to stay within the thirty seconds because we want the audience members, as many audience members, to have an opportunity to share their question. We are going to finish the speaking portion about 7:05 is the last question that we'll take, and then we'll wrap up for the evening. All right. So please start making your way if you have questions or start lining up if you plan to have a question. Give folks some time. All right. May begin.
Good evening. I'm Bishop Neil Boyd, Pastor of Antime Revival Holiness Church. Also, I'm the President of the National Life and Mental Illness of Western Mass, known as NAMI. I'm a proactive kind of person, and I'm questioning this to the whole panel here. Dealing with mental illness, I'm a mental health clinician, and we know around the country, a lot of the mass shootings and different things is happening because of mental illness. And I'm just wondering, is there something set up as far as the city or the City Council as far as being proactive when it comes to plans or different things that we have to help our community as far as education and that type of thing, because I love to be involved if it is, bringing more education and awareness to our community, because a lot of people have issues, and honestly, they don't know that there's help out there. So I'm just wondering, is this something that we're doing to help avoid, because we don't want to go that way? We've been blessed in our city. So is all you guys doing something or something I'm not aware of?
All right. Fantastic. Does anyone on this side of the table, as far as school committee, want to take that question first?
So, good evening, Bishop Boyd, and I just had an opportunity to meet Mr. Boyd prior to the forum starting. So in addition to being a school committee person, I have been a social worker, a licensed clinician, social worker for the last sixteen to seventeen years, and I can't necessarily give you a specific resource that's within the city outside of our many mental health agencies such as BHN, Gondara, CHD, but I can tell you that in the kids division, as a result of a lawsuit that happened some years ago, there are systems of care meetings that happened all throughout the city, whether our state stakeholders that sit at those meetings, community providers, school personnel, who are all sort of working together to figure out how we can provide wraparound services to our children and families who have issues with respect to mental health.
Does anyone over here want to take a question? Just give me a little. Come on over here.
Just real quick, Bishop Boyd, as far as the state level, there's funding up there for your agencies and different services that you do. I want to just tell you to petition our office and the rest of the State House and any type of help we can give you. I know as far as on our office, we personally, there's a bill H484. It's an act relative to continual care for mental health. H488, an act to increase access to children's mental health services in the community. And there's more and more, as far as up in the State House, we are supporting and co-sponsoring, sponsoring bills that is really addressing the mental health. So I would just say petition us, and any time we can get any funding for you, let us know.
Well, so really, is no, nothing set up by the City Council or nothing like that to bring this issue more awareness as far as mental health in our city?
Well, I believe individually that if, you know, I've worked with you, Mr. Boyd, plenty of times, but I think it's individually, if you reach out to any of us, preferably I would think that maybe through Health and Human Services, we can set up some kind of a support or have meetings behind, other than C3 and community forums, where we probably bring those BHNs, Gondara, and try to figure out with counselors in the school system to figure out how can we can work hand-in-hand together, because in our capacity, you know, I'm not saying it's what we, we are able to support, because City Council, for some individuals that don't understand, this is a part-time job. Obviously, we have a full-time initiative, well, you guys assume that we are full-time guys, so most of us work full-time other jobs. So to be able to get to some of these meetings is tough for some of us, but essentially, I would think that my colleagues and myself would love to spread the word and put out anything that's going on, you know, on our social media, or be able to better support specifically your program or anything going on in the city of Springfield that has to do with our children.
All right. Thank you so much, Councilor, and thank you so much for your question.
Bishop, Bishop Boyd, I just wanted to comment quickly, and first of all, I wanted to echo my colleagues in thanking you for the work that you've done around this issue, and your point is well-taken. So I sit as the Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee of the City Council, and we'd be more than happy to sit down with you, our Commissioner Helen Colton Harris, and discuss about what programs are specifically available in the city of Springfield. I think that, you know, our colleague committee woman, Hurst, has pointed out some of the great outside organizations that are doing good work, and I can also tell you that I've been having meetings with the Police Department around a pilot program that they have started called Hub and Core, which I was very supportive of during my campaign, which really seeks to identify individuals in the community who may be having large amounts of run-ins with the police, but it is as a result of mental health or mental illness issues, and they are being connected to resources as a result of that, which I think is a very important initiative and one that I'm actually going to be at the State House next week speaking with Baker Administration officials about. So I'd be more than happy to set up a meeting with you. I have your contact information. We just had a letter from you yesterday, but thank you for all the work you're doing to bring attention to this important issue.
If I may just say something real quick. And so Bishop, one of the things that I'm looking at here is just trying to make sure I have your contact information, because I do, in my day job, United Way, we work with a lot of service organizations, and there are some initiatives, but I can't think of them off the top of my head right now. So if this information on your letter that you gave us is accurate, I will send you an email with some of those resources that are available that I'm aware of. Thank you.
All right. All right. Thank you so much. Next question, please. And don't forget that this is your thirty-second bar, and this means to wrap it up, all right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good evening. My name is Miguel Rivas. People call me Mike. I live in the North End, Springfield, so I'm basically from Ward One. I'd like to follow up a little bit on what Bishop was talking about, but in the sense of, because of the things that are happening in this country right now, with all the mass shootings and things like that, basically, I'm thinking more about the kids and what's available for them to stay out of trouble. All right. Haven't been in social services, you know, for years, dealing with kids, working at the Y and stuff. Henry, you know a lot about that stuff, that Henry was one of my mentors as a kid. I'd just like to know, where are we and what resources can we tap into? And I think this is more towards the state legislative people to get programs funded that need to be funded in order to be able to do things with our kids.
Whoops. Thanks, Mike, and thank you for the question, and it's an important one because obviously I think that's probably why we're all here, right, is making sure that not only is our community thriving, but we're doing everything we can to leave our community in the best hands for the next generation. So certainly on the state level, we do all types of things in terms of funding. Some of the ones I can think off the top of my head, certainly funding for, you know, locally here for the MLK program, Summer Jobs Program, trying to think of all different types of funding, if you want to help me out, but we do quite a bit of WAKE, was another one that we did as of recently. So there's quite a few things. I wish I brought a list of some of the earmarks that we've done in the past, but, you know, my priorities in terms of State Senate, you know, when you do try and bring resources back, you do try and look at those programs, one, that are having impact in the community, and two, are focused on kids. Square Ones, another organization that we've certainly worked with and helped provide funding for, and those are all youth-centered or family-centered type programs. So we certainly do bring back plenty of resources in the community that go to organizations that serve kids. I think the one that I think we should really highlight more and more is the Summer Jobs Program, because as we know, when kids are out of school in June, July, and August, you know, idle hands, we want to make sure that they're busy, that they're, you know, having opportunity, you know, to be productive, and those are the type of programs I think that we have to continue to focus on, and I know that there's, you know, a press event, actually, I think I just saw it on my schedule in the next couple of weeks to announce more additional funding for Summer Jobs Programs. So, thank you.
On my end, it's basically the same. I am a founding member of a WAKE, so I come from a background for over twenty years working with inner-city at-risk teens. As far as what I would recommend in your portion of what you're asking, I think we don't have enough programs. I think some of them are dated, but it's up to the community to come up with those programs. So basically, I would, if there's something that you think would be impactful, it's create it, and if it's going to be effective and impactful, we'll support it.
I think, because one of the major problems that we face, particularly with our kids today, is most of the programs are for children between, you know, six through twelve, and then like when they turn thirteen, that's it. There's nothing for them.
Well, and that's where I would just urge you, maybe to collectively come up with you and maybe another group of people to service that group. Maybe we, if we know that that's an area that's not being serviced, it would be up to, you know, because we, as legislators, we don't come up with, you know, hey, we think that this is a problem, let's come up with a program, let's, it's up to you guys to work with us as a community. I know Senator Welch, when we first came at him with a WAKE, working with the at-risk teens in the community that were killing each other, he seen our program, he signed off on it. So a lot of times what it is, is being able to actually get your paperwork in order to petition for the state funding out there. That's what a lot of times a lot of people will have a hard time doing. So you might say, how do I do that? So if you want to contact our office, if you need help with it, contact, contact me. I'll help you draw it up. And anyone out there, anybody out there who has a program that they think would be effective and they need help drafting it, and if it's going to impact the community, I know Representative Williams' office is open to help, and I definitely know the Senator's office is open to help.
All right. And we have a question over here.
Yeah, I have an answer for you, Mike.
Yeah.
You know, the City Council has a different role than the State. The City Council unfortunately cannot add funding or programs to the budget, but we certainly can be supportive in other ways, particularly as mentors or through our public speak, coming to the Council and making us aware of programs that need to be supportive. So we have different roles in all these things, but I have to say that my colleagues that are all with me here tonight have never refused to accept a grant that helps and supports children, and that is our well, our role to receive the grants and make sure that they go to the agencies that help out, but each area of government has a different way of doing it. So we all support it in different ways.
And I'll just say very briefly, to your point, one of my plights as being the Chair for the Maintenance Development Subcommittee is, I realize that, you know, over the last few years, just kind of working through local politics and local government, that with the discussion surrounding open gyms, for example, it doesn't make sense to me that by the time a child gets out of school, they, some of the gyms, open gyms around the city, not all are closed, or that they don't allow, in essence, the term open gym beads, that you're allowing kids from any community to frequent your location, but sometimes it's reserved for programs that are already in existence that don't allow the outside to come in. So I would expand that conversation with some of our local communities' resources, such as like the MLK Center and Dunbar, for example, that have those resources, but, you know, if we could do a better job at making sure that the at-risk youth especially- such as like the MLK Center and Dunbar, for example, that have those resources, but, you know, if we could do a better job at making sure that the at-risk youth especially, those communities have access to the open gyms, that's something that I'm going to be looking into myself.
Don't forget the YMCA, too.
And I was going to say, just quickly, one of those grants that Caterie was referring to is the Shannon Grant. And within the Shannon Grant, they provided funding for open gym and after-school programs. And I also want to highlight the fact that Health New England, Pat Sullivan from the Parks Department, who does a wonderful job in terms of securing money for open gyms and after-school programs, was able to solidify this year an additional, I believe, $30,000 to keep gyms open for a longer period of time. And so oftentimes, we run into issues with respect to the budget and all of the councilors here will continue to fight to make sure that there is more money that is allocated towards open gyms and after-school programs. But oftentimes, you know, we need to convince the administration that this is a priority. And so we'll continue to do that. But in the meantime, you know, I just want to say Pat Sullivan is doing a wonderful job in terms of trying to identify funding.
I'm going to jump back to you councillor. Did you want to make a comment?
Just because he's one of my constituents.
Okay, go ahead.
No, primarily, I just want to make everybody aware, in the North End also, we have projects like Project Coach. Project Coach is a program that not only mentors young people, but once they're developed and old enough, they actually become employable by the program. So when they reach that age that you described, that, you know, they're at risk, which a lot of us, we tend to think that high school is the risk age, which we have to really identify that it's really middle school. That's when basically they start to find themselves. The reason why I know that is because I followed your path. I used to work at the YMCA for seven years. I used to be the program coordinator and the director over at the North End Youth Center for quite some time. And if we're not involved, regardless of stature involved with some of these kids, and some of them, we come from communities that they don't have moms, they don't have dads. And if we don't ally with programs like Boys and Girls Club, MLK, or North End Youth Center, YMCA, and now our newly-built facility, the South End Community Center, which are going to be all week this week, for free, you could have signed up your child. So I think we just have to do a better job of getting the information out there to the public, specifically when we have new things opening up, like the revitalization of the new South End Community Center, like bringing boxing back. Some of those stuff that you guys grew up doing that we don't necessarily have. But realistically, like Senator Welch had stated about, you know, about employment, sometimes there's not enough to go around, so that's part of the problem, that these programs do exist, but financially, there's not enough money to be able to put in all these districts. So necessarily, what we have to do is just come together as a community and try to understand which in each community has those programs so we can better service them. Because honestly, there is programs out there. We just have to do a better job of sending our kids to them and understanding where they are, because there's a lot of things going out there that we have to, we have to understand. The Shannon Grant was one of them, that every year, the Shannon Grant comes up and it goes to a couple of programs, and we wish that we could expand it to other programs and organizations, but there's just not enough to go around. And that's always been an issue in communities of Springfield.
All right, we have one last response and if you could make it as brief as possible.
Not me. So Mike, I keep losing my voice. So I just wanted to kind of echo a little bit of what Councillor Gomez said, that there are a lot of programs, excuse me, there's a lot of programs out there. The biggest issue is us marketing them as a community and making sure that people are aware. Most of the programs, the YMCA's, Boys and Girls Club, Salvation Army, a lot of these programs are open and they are not at full capacity. And the reason why they're not at full capacity is because we're not doing a good job of making sure that kids are going there and the memberships are very inexpensive. Some of them is $10 for the year to attend, some of them is $40 for the whole year. And they have all these services, swimming, everything. And so although I understand some concerns with people saying, you know, why isn't there more open gym and everything, people have certain regulations in place that they have to comply with, which is why they don't allow people just to walk in and just participate. Because if I'm a parent, I don't want anybody just walking in off the street and I don't know that they've been, you know, checked out thoroughly to make sure they're not bringing in something that they shouldn't be bringing into that facility. So there are certain rules and mandates, but at the same time, until we get to that point where we're reaching capacity at a lot of these programs, it's very difficult to advocate for more funding for them if we're not utilizing them at full capacity. So I would say that would be one thing. And the other thing is, to our Senator's point and our state rep over here, legislative aide, to their point, that there's a lot of programming we can bring into those facilities. So if you have an idea and you feel like there's something that's not happening, volunteer at the facility, start a program, do something with them and support what they're doing so that we can get more people utilizing these facilities. Because they're beautiful facilities, they have a lot to offer, and they're underutilized.
All right, thank you. Next question, please.
I just want to say again, thank you very much and I'm sorry that this issue took up so much time.
I'm Liz Stevens from the McKnight Neighborhood, and I just want to take this opportunity to bring up an important topic for the McKnight Neighborhood, and that is a hiking biking trail on an abandoned rail line that runs through the McKnight Neighborhood and all the way from East Long Meadow down to Union Station. So I have brought a map. For anybody who hasn't seen my maps before, I don't so much have a question, is I just always want this to be on your mind, because this is an issue that can have public health benefits by increasing exercise opportunities for all the neighborhoods, for anyone in the city. It's an issue of economic value because it can, has been found to bring up the value of homes in that abut the trail. And we, the council, have been working on this issue for, I know I started in 2004, but we have, with the Parks Department, we have made great progress. We are finding funding and we just need the city's support in this project because we want this to be a linear park in the city of Springfield. Anyone who's been biking on the linear parks in Northampton, all the way up to Leeds and down in Southwick, down into Connecticut, they are a wonderful way for all of us to connect with nature, get exercise, and we need to have this kind of thing in the city of Springfield. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them, but thank you very much. And I'll just put this up in case anybody else wants to see. And I do want to point out, on this map, we are right here. So this is not just a city council or a city government issue, this is a school committee issue because children from Rebecca Johnson School could be walking on that hiking biking trail in a bus, the playground for Rebecca Johnson School.
All right, we have a comment here.
Well, I just want to take a minute first to thank you, Liz, for coming out and sharing with us about the bike trail. And Liz really deserves a round of applause and commendation for her advocacy on this project and the entire McKnight Neighborhood Council. What they've done over the last decade or more has been really incredible for a private community organization. I mean, we're talking about countless dollars that they've secured in grant funds and state funds that are ready to go. They need the support of the mayor and they need the support of city officials. But this has really been done by residents who were concerned about this great asset that was going unused. And it's a project that we have to get done because Liz has been telling me that we're going to build this in my neighborhood since I was a kid. So it needs to get done. It's something very important. And we were able to connect recently Liz with some advocates in other parts of the city that are interested in developing other sections of the trail. So not only can we see McKnight developed, but in the future, we might be able to see even more developed going on and be really an incredible asset for the city. So my offer to you stands. When you guys are ready to talk with other city officials about this, I'm happy to talk with you. I'm sure my colleagues share that sentiment as well. But again, the amount of funding that you've already secured for this project is really an amazing feat. And it's a model, I think, for what neighborhood councils and civic associations can do across Springfield.
We could not have done it without the help of the Parks Department. I have to thank Pat Sullivan and Mike Tully specifically.
Do we have any other council comments?
I'd just like to say also that Liz has been doing this ever since I was a little boy myself.
Okay, okay, I'll go with that.
This is one hell of a project. And if you take one minute of your time to listen, she'll convince you that it is. And so I would ask my colleagues to keep an open mind if you're not already convinced that it's something that is useful for the city, but keep an open mind and help us who want to bring it to the administration so that they are well aware that this is something the city must have. I mean, it's a deserted railway, it's not being used, it's never going to be used again, and it just said it's dormant. And Liz had the gumption to, well, more than that, but she had the will to work on this project and it is almost there. So please, let's work together with, as a group, and get the administration to support it. That's what she's asking us to do.
Liz, I want to thank you for, first of all, for bringing forward the Complete Streets concept to us. As you know, the Senator and I are very supportive of that initiative. And we just received, I believe, $400,000?
$365,000 from DOT to implement those Complete Streets projects that they're going to do first.
Which is awesome. I mean, it's a great initiative. The concept behind Complete Streets is that our streets are not built just for motor vehicles. They're also built for alternative forms of transportation, such as biking and walking.
Like our feet and our bicycles.
Exactly. Which are not just economic, not only have economic benefits, as you explained, but also have health benefits to our community. The more people that are out there walking and biking, the healthier we're going to have of a community. And so I want to thank you for your efforts on that. We'll continue to support the effort and hopefully get some more funding in the next round.
All right, I'll take one last comment if we have one and then we'll move along. All right, thank you so much. Next question, please.
Good evening. I want to just thank all of you for coming out tonight and giving us your time. My name is Kimberly DeNoya. I live on Wallaston Street in Springfield. I'm the former president of the Pine Point Community Council. I'm currently the co-chair of Sector G Community Policing. I am here about Wallaston Street. It's a fairly new street in regards to Springfield. Most of the houses have been built in the last 13, 14, and 15 years. In that time, the conservative estimate that I've made is $2.8 million in taxes have been collected from those homes. Most, I would say, there are 65 houses on the street. At least two-thirds of them are over $200,000. We have invested in Springfield. Our street is deplorable. There are holes where a small animal can fall in them. Now, we have had DPW come out and patch the holes. That will last for about a month until it gets warm again and then everything will come up and then we'll have these big boulders that we have to all drive around. The manhole covers are jutting up through the street. We cannot get anyone to snowplow because it does damage to the street. So I'm just wondering when, after years and years of asking, when our street is going to get addressed?
All right, fantastic. Am I going to start with the councillors?
Wallaston Street is right behind Walmart and Casa Dinana.
It's right behind Casa Dinana. It runs parallel to Slater Avenue in my ward. And so when is the last time that the street was paved? Do you remember?
2004.
2004, okay.
When the street was first put in and there was never a second coat done.
So what I'm going to do is I'm going to reach out to the DPW to see where in the priority list Wallaston Street is. I am very familiar, as you know, with that street. There are some beautiful, beautiful houses on Wallaston. And so there should be no reason why the street should be in that condition. So I'm going to check in with the DPW to make sure that it's on the priority list. And I'm going to, and I'll go there myself and just check on the conditions myself so I can share the pictures with the DPW. Thank you for sharing that concern. I also want to tell you that, actually, it's fresh off the press, if you will. I'm going to be scheduling almost a walking tour of the three districts that I help represent, 16 Acres, Upper Hill, and Pine Point. The first one will be in 16 Acres, but what it will do is allow residents to specifically address their areas of concern. So if their street's not getting plowed, we're going to have Chris Signoli at the table and you can share that information with him. And whatever he relays is the, you know, the course of action, hopefully that should be taken. But it's, I mean, it's coming straight from the horse's mouth, if you will. So that is going to be one thing that I am doing. I've already scheduled the first one for 16 Acres, Pine Point is second. And when that one takes place, I would hope to have you there at the table.
Well, thank you for bringing that to our attention. So did you say the street's never been plowed?
It gets plowed two days later.
Two days later.
So when the snow is somehow melted, then they will come down. When we first put in the street, or when the street was first built, we had to lobby for our own mail service. So we took that upon ourselves. I also want to mention that this is a very nice street and rarely do city services, such as the Police Department and the Fire Department, get called. So I want to know why we're paying, over the last 10 years, conservatively, $2.8 million in taxes.
Right, that's a legitimate question.
And this street looks like this.
Right. What was the response of DPW?
We're on the list.
On the list. Well, you know, that list is mythical and people have been on that list.
I'm aware.
People have been on that list for many, many years. But this year, there is more funding. So hopefully, your street will be on that list. But I do think the squeaky wheel gets things done and with the help of the council, there might be a resolution for you.
All right, we'll take one last comment.
Kim, I just wanted to thank you for coming out. And I just want to say, this is a really great example of what tonight is about. I mean, you now have the vast majority of the City Council aware of your issue and probably going to write an email to Chris Signoli about it. And so just to echo Councillor Walsh's sentiment, but I mean, this is why we want to do this, is an opportunity for people to come out and share these types of concerns, because you'd be surprised, I think, how many other people are in the same position of you where something's been an issue for almost 10 years, but maybe they just didn't have the opportunity before to share it with the right people. So thank you for coming.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I just have a question. Do you have sidewalks?
Yes.
So, and part of the street. So essentially, if you didn't shovel your sidewalk, you could be cited.
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
If you have sidewalks and if you don't, if somebody slips and falls in front of your house, you are held liable through the city so you can be cited. So there's an issue with your street. I've been a really big advocate of why certain streets look better than the other ones. And essentially, I was just trying to figure out if you had sidewalks to figure out if it was a private way or if it was considered a street, regardless if they call it a street. Because Maintenance Development last year had this same communication, trying to figure out, and I know if I'm right, Chapter 90 funds have risen, and like our colleague, Mr. Letterman, had stated that this is something that I believe that our president is going to definitely address. But aside from that, I promise you that I'm also going to be sending my personal email, because I think that's not right. $2.8 million is a lot of money, specifically that you're not, your place is not getting shoveled. And I know exactly the street you're talking about. It's a very nice neighborhood.
All right, thank you so much.
And if I can add real quick, from the state portion, there is funding that's hitting the area. As far as the rep, we're just new as far as in our positions. But there is money, I would say, in certain areas around this area, around July, a lot of the repairs will happen in different areas. I would just make sure you keep in touch with your city councillor and making sure that when that time, get in touch- that when that time, get in touch with them now, making sure that time, that that money and funding get to you guys' area. But there is money.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next question. And for electeds, I'm going to start limiting the responses to three. So I'm just going to randomly pick whoever three that I see to answer the response. And please try to keep your response brief, because we have a lot of people lined up, and we're a little crunched for time. So I will now become very strict on time, elected. So please bear in mind, I'm picking three responses, and you must be brief. If you want to follow up with some of the constituents in the audience, please do so at the end. There's definitely some time. And I encourage folks that had some lingering, burning questions that we did not get to, that you approach our elected officials and make sure you make those ask. And I'm sure they'll take the time to jot down your question and your contact information. All right, next question, please. Thank you.
Thanks. It's just going to take a little bit more because I need to translate for him, so.
Okay, not a problem.
Thanks.
Buenas noches a todos. Mi nombre es Anibal Gomez. Soy residente de acá de Springfield. Actualmente soy uno de los organizadores de Centro Obrero de Valle de Pionero, acá en Springfield. Nos reunimos con la comunidad de migrante al norte de la ciudad.
Hello, my name is Anibal Gomez. I'm an organizer for the Pioneer Valley Worker Center in Springfield. Anibal lives on Armory Street, and he's lived there for 18 years. He's a member of the worker committee that meets in the north end of Springfield.
Nos enfocamos en educar a la comunidad de migrante para que conozcan sus derechos y también sepan cómo comportarse ante un oficial de policía o un oficial de migración, que son dos cosas diferentes. Nosotros, los trabajadores inmigrantes, estamos viviendo a veces con miedo de ser esto, ahora sí que detenido por la policía y después posteriormente a migración. Siempre vivimos con ese temor y lamentablemente pues vivimos sin papeles en este país y por eso estamos aquí reunidos ante ustedes o pidiendo a que si ustedes nos pueden colaborar con ayudarnos pues trabajar juntos para que podamos sentirnos un poco más tranquilos.
We work to empower the working immigrant communities so that we know our rights and know how to protect ourselves from the police and from ICE, the immigration authorities. Even though there's two different groups, we as immigrants live in constant fear and worry because we never know if the police will work with ICE or let us live our lives safely and without fear. We're here to ask you to support us.
En nombre de la comunidad nosotros pedimos el apoyo de ustedes para que podamos trabajar juntos y así pues la policía no colabore con inmigración, que no compartan la información de las personas que son detenidas por una infracción de tránsito y después son transferidas a migración.
We're here to ask for your support. We ask that you work with us to ensure that the police not work with ICE, federal immigration authorities, and that they stop sharing any information that they might gather with individuals who are undocumented and detained for harmless reasons such as minor traffic violations.
Porque recientemente nos hemos dado cuenta que sí está sucediendo en nuestra comunidad. Tenemos testimonios de algunas personas que la semana pasada apenas uno de mi familiar fue detenido, que es uno de mis sobrinos, y que es un joven de trabajador que lucha para mantener a su familia y ha estado aquí por varios años. No tiene ningún récord criminal. Es una buena persona que merece lo mismo, los mismos derechos que todos los demás que vivimos en este país. Fue arrestado al andar manejando sin una licencia cuando lo tratamos de sacar en la cárcel por una fianza. Nos dijeron que teníamos que esperar más tiempo para que ellos nos lo puedan dar porque habían trasladado su información de él a ICE, inmigración, y nos dijeron pues que si ellos no le daban la orden de que lo soltaban, ellos lo iban a detener. Entonces pedimos el apoyo pues de la comunidad para poder sacar, lograrlo, y fuimos al día siguiente con él a la corte para que nos aseguramos que inmigración no esté ahí esperando por él.
We know that this is happening in our community. This happened to my nephew last week. He's a young man who's been here for a few years. He has no criminal record. He's a good person who's working full-time. He deserves the same as anyone else living in this country. He was arrested for driving without a driver's license. When we went to bail him out, the police told us that they had to wait for him to be cleared by ICE before they would release him because they had shared his fingerprints and information with them. They told us that if ICE gave the order to detain him, they would. With the support of the community, we were able to get him out on bail and ensure that he was able to leave his court hearing safely the next day without being detained by ICE.
Vamos a seguir en nuestra lucha, de seguir construyendo este movimiento, pero necesitamos el apoyo de ustedes, por favor, que hagan esto a la comunidad más segura para las familias inmigrantes que viven aquí en esta ciudad. Los invitamos a nuestro comité y esperamos que podamos unirnos en este trabajo crítico para nosotros pues ahora es más que nunca el momento de trabajar junto y apoyar mutuamente. Gracias, muchas gracias por la oportunidad que nos dieron de explicar esto.
We're committed to this fight, and we'll grow the movement, but we need your help. We ask that you work with us to make this community safe for immigrant families that live here like my own. We invite you to join our worker committee that meets every couple of weeks, and we hope that we can collaborate in this critical work. Now, more than ever, it's the time to unite and protect the most vulnerable. Thank you very much for listening to us.
Counselor Gomez, you have a comment?
So I work closely with, I actually work closely with this case that he is actually talking about. And on June 5th, 2017, the city council unanimously approved and passed the Safe Communities Resolution, which stopped, well, it's a non-binding resolution, but it's basically like a memorandum of understanding that our local law enforcement is not supposed to collaborate as ICE agents or with ICE at all. I know it's not part of their procedure and protocol during the, but if you are arrested by the Springfield Police Department, they will do fingerprints because it's part of their policy and procedure, and then they put it in a database. And if somebody was actually using those firm words of saying that they're waiting for ICE to get back to them, necessarily, they're trying to figure out if a certain individual is wanted in any other state for some reason. From the communications that we've had with Commissioner Barberi is that our Springfield Police Department does not work in collaboration with ICE because the 287G would be a contractual agreement with the federal government, which we are not under to, that our police department would have to go under some training. So realistically, yes, federal agents do exist and work and operate within the city limits, and the north end is home to the biggest immigrant population, but it's not just the Guatemalan community. And in the city of Springfield, we have a Jamaican community, we have a Vietnamese community. So we have to look past that, the sense that these are tax-paying citizens that actually do work, that actually have homes and have families that are within our school system. But realistically, I know that we need more work. We need to do a better job of trying to create some kind of legislature or ordinance to try to be more sensitive to the people that live here, that's part of our economic development footprint. But realistically, when it comes to the license, I know in Connecticut, they issue licenses to undocumented immigrants, and also in Vermont. So a lot of these individuals that travel for work in and out of the valley, up and down the Connecticut River, are at risk sometimes when stopped of being detained or arrested because they are unlawfully driving without a license.
Thank you. I'm going to respond to that. Could you have that comment after? I just have a really long line, and I want to make sure.
I'm really sorry. I need to say something that's super important. It'll be very quick. I wanted to say that, with all due respect, there was a Supreme Court case in Massachusetts in, last year decided, that states specifically that the police are not allowed to hold somebody while they're waiting for ICE to confirm anything. ICE is a federal, noncriminal organization, and I can give, I'll give you the site, please look it up.
No, I'm definitely.
They should not, it was an unconstitutional arrest of him when he should have been let out on bail, so.
Realistically, I was there, and I assisted with this gentleman, and I understand completely what you're saying. But what I am stating is that as of police protocol, and this is not saying that I'm covering for them because I'm on your side and I'm with you, because most of this undocumented community lives in my district, and these are my friends, they've become my friends and family, I consider them. But realistically, when they can say, realistically, is when they can say, if we can have proof that somebody stated that we're waiting for ICE, then that's when we can use that so then we can have some teeth on it. That's all I'm saying.
I was a witness, because I was at the police.
So that's something we need to talk to after.
Thank you so much for your comment. We're going to take the next question, please.
Come on, come on, come on, come on, come on. Realistically, just hold on. If you want to say something, please stand in line or just wait after. We don't, no, no, but right now, we're just being, it's just being rude. It's just being rude, and we're going to have to ask you to leave, sir.
I understand what you're saying, sir, and then we're going to take the time to move it along. Next question, please. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Since moving to Springfield a few years ago, me and my wife have become more engaged in the local community. We've gone to a lot of events and seen the same concerns that are coming up today with Health and Human Services, and a lot of times with 911 operations and the police presence. We've also gone to different meetings and, you know, budget concerns and looked at the budget that's coming up for next year. When, when all of you basically go and deliberate on the 2018 budget, the thing I would ask is, right now, public safety, health, and human services are two areas that are being cut. Public safety with the police patrol budgets are up, you know, 1% to 3% depending, and, you know, fire is up slightly. We have a major casino that's going to be opening here, and that's going to, you know, create a lot of traffic, a lot of concerns. I'm going to go quicker. You don't go to a restaurant that's empty, so if you don't have police around when your casino opens, there's a problem. Health and Human Services, you're going to cut that budget, and you're looking at, brand-new senior center just opened, veterans, elderly, and the budget cuts complete are less than $1 million. We just increased all of our property values from the work that's happened, and we're going to have over a $10 million surplus. We had $6 million surplus last year, and another, you know, $70 million in the bank. Why not just fund everything, increase the police and the Health and Human Services? Because the federal government's not increasing anything right now? Sorry, I'll stop. And that's basically it.
All right, I'm going to take one, one comment. All right, any of the councilors want to comment? Thank you so much. Next question.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tim Moriarty, and I grew up in the Forest Park section by the X. I now live in 16 Acres. I'm one of the library commissioners for the city library system. Thank you very much for your support on the state level and the local level. It's been incredible in the past few years. We've never been busier, so thank you for that. The reason I'm here tonight is really about public health and public safety with regard to needle exchange and the needle exchange program. I know Carlton Harris is supposed to be presenting information to you about this upcoming. The science is really clear about this. I worked in an AIDS organization in New York City. I was a representative on an AIDS Guidance Task Force in New Jersey, and it actually did pass the city council, even though the newspapers say it didn't. It did pass, and then it was rescinded about a month later, 10 or 15 years ago. It's important to keep the needles out of the parks. It's important to help addicts. We know we have an opioid crisis in this state and in the country. And the more contact that addicts can have with social workers and other healthcare professionals, the better for them and the better for society. So please keep that in mind as you're voting on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for your comment.
My name is Liz Ogilvy. I'm the other McKnight Liz. I work on school food like she works on the trail. I work on food all over the city. I fear, like the state of Massachusetts where we have two economies, that Springfield is going that way. The disparity between the kinds of development that happens downtown and that happens in the rest of the Springfield is horrific. That's where the city council, we have to figure out a better way. I have personally led an organization that's raised a half a million dollars and has changed the face of a large block on Walnut Street. We feed over 180 families healthy, fresh, organic food every year. And the other development that went up in that neighborhood was the Family Dollar on Hancock Street. That's shameful. We can do better. Senator Welch, you have got to advocate for us at the state level. PBTA is being cut dramatically here. People here take the bus to work, the doctor, seniors are going to be impacted, and Boston Transit is not being impacted. That is a conversation about race and equity. City, I love, I love the school committee. They work well with me. We have got to tell the truth about commerce. Every year, less than 100, more than 100 kids in the graduating class differ between the freshman class. That is not 100% graduation rate. I don't need a response, but I need you to work. You know, I work really hard, and I don't get paid. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Liz. Next comment or question?
Good evening, panel. My name is Gary Corbett, and I am one of the victims of last year who got shot by a gun in the streets of Springfield. June 1st, on Bay Street, I was driving down the street and a young man who was just let out eight days from prison pulled out a nine, tech gun and commenced to shooting at another vehicle as I was driving through. One of my questions is, what are we going to do about the gun violence in this city? Seven people were shot in that day, that week. I also, you know, got a letter here from the Victims Conversation and Assistance Division telling me that however I was eligible, I will not be able to receive anything. And this is a letter for my right to contest an award or denial. I didn't get anything. I don't know who to.
All right, so we have a question on the floor about gun control, gun violence or violence within the city of Springfield and what we're doing about that. Can I get two responses? One over here, Senator? And then over here? All right.
Certainly, Mr. Corbett, thank you for sharing your story with us. And on the city level, of course, I know Counselor Twigs mentioned the Shot Spotter, and certainly, we're doing things on the state level to bring resources back to help communities. One thing we did do, I mean, it's not necessarily specific to your situation, of course, but Massachusetts was the first state to ban bump stocks, which was a step when it comes to gun control and gun violence here in our country. And that's something that's being debated right now in the rest of the country because of the tragedy that happened in Florida and other places over the last couple of years, unfortunately. I am curious about the letter you received. I'd love to take a look at it. Is it from where it's from? And maybe you can just stop over here on the way over and, or on the way back to your seat, I could take a look at it, see what, see where that's from.
I just have one more question. How much does it cost to in-house an inmate a year? Do anybody know? $40,000, right? And they have $25,000 in a fund allocated to my name, and they're telling me that I can't get it. But an inmate can go to jail and be taken care of for $40,000? After convict, after being convicted for a crime? I didn't, I didn't, my arm is, I can't use my arm.
All right, we have one last comment?
I have one last comment. I'm working, I've spoken with you on the matter, as far as our office is aware of it. Give me the information also. I definitely will go to bat. I believe it's Maura Healey, one of the attorneys, that you need us to speak to. So it's something that we'll handle. All right.
Mr. Corbett, I, Mr. Corbett, I just wanted to thank you for coming. And I think that we actually met over the summer possibly at an event. And so, you know, I just wanted to say, I'm very sorry for what happened. And, you know, when I grew up on the corner of Bay and Clarendon, we dealt with a lot of perception issues about crime in that neighborhood. And one of the things we always felt we confidently could say, though, was that if you were a law-abiding citizen, minded your business, living in the neighborhood... living in the neighborhood and being a productive member of society, that you didn't have anything to worry about. Your incident brought real concern to this community around what happened. And I also want to take a look at that letter. My cards are at the front desk. And if you can be in touch, I'm sure between councilors, Mr. Brown and Senator Welch, that we can, you know, hopefully get a better understanding of what's going on in that case.
Thank you very much.
All right, next question or comment, please.
My name is Rose Webster Smith, I live in Ward Five. I am a organizer with Springfield No One Leaves. And my question is, we have a huge displacement problem with foreclosures. We have people being displaced from the receivership program. And now we have major investors coming into the community buying up, for instance, 122 Chestnut Street, who are gonna raise the rents and some of our residents have already gotten a 30-day notice to vacate. So what I'm, my question is, what is the city's plan to help with displacement when these, these people who are, are looking at a $500 rent increase, a one-bedroom apartment is gonna go from $800 to $1,349 in the city of Springfield? So what's the plan for our low-income residents who want to stay in the community? Oh, and, and one final comment, when are we gonna put a crosswalk at the main library on State Street?
All right. Okay, can I get a response over here? And if we have a response over here?
Actually, actually, at the state rep actually signed in, co-sponsored a bill. You know, we work with you guys fighting H550 and ACT to facilitate alternatives for foreclosure. So, you know, we're fighting on that foreclosure. And we also have great news as far as we got, I wanna say over maybe 30, don't quote me, 50 million for low-income housing. So right where that motorcycle building, there'll be a big unit. So as far as low-income housing, we got great news, income coming. So we're addressing that state level.
All right, one comment over here, please, 30 seconds.
Rose, thanks for coming. And I can't speak to 122 Chestnut right now because it's pending before the council and there's too many of us here. But I can talk to you about affordable housing in general. And one of the things that I really do want to see us move forward with in Springfield is a housing needs assessment, one done by an unbiased independent agency or consultant group to tell us really what is the status of housing in the city of Springfield and what we do need and where we need it. I think that's really important going forward. I know a number of nonprofits have actually done a lot of the legwork in gathering the information needed around that. But we need the city and the administration to move forward on that type of a study.
All right, we're gonna stop the line, gentlemen in the gray, Tracy, and the gentleman behind you, if you have your last questions, could you give that, have that after the event? Next person?
Yes, my name's Denise Mosia. I grew up in Forest Park. I've lived in McKnight for 21 years and I'm also a board member for the Springfield Preservation Trust. Every year we do a most endangered list. We do a lot of work for you, finding significant historic abandoned properties in the city. But specifically, I want to talk about the Knox Automobile Factory at 53 Wilbraham Road, which the city has owned since 2009, has not secured it from further damage. In 2015, I wrote a letter to the mayor, he did respond. It went out to RFP last year with no takers. Some people would argue the value of that building. I think it could and should, should look as good as Indian Motorcycle, which is the jewel in the square. And it's an example of our rich industrial history. A prominent family looked at the building and could not work the numbers and their suggestion was that AIC take it for student housing, which is a good idea because it's walkable, it has parking. The security can patrol the area and they could save the building.
One comment over here, and if anyone over here?
From what I understand, when some of these buildings go out to RFP, the issue that CDBG money is being used to pay back old bonds. And some of these RFPs, when they go out, because I have the same problem in my district and north, and the north end, the downtown district, that some of these buildings that go up and they're still just sitting there 10, 12, 15 years, people aren't taking them because there's no incentive for them to take the building and spend all that money into it. So that's something that we need to work, work towards, specifically asking those questions of what can we do? Because we have a lot of beautiful buildings within the city of Springfield that are good bones. They just need a little bit of tender loving care. And honestly, we've been working on that since last year, trying to figure out. But it's, it's basically that's what's going on. They're not taking them because there's no incentive attached to the RFP.
So I guess I would just ask maybe if that was the suggestion, maybe you could form a committee, someone could work with AIC and see if they would be interested in taking that building. Thank you.
I think you should look into whether or not this is a project that qualifies for CPA funding.
All right, next comment or question?
You're done? All right, everybody knows me, I'm Yolanda. I'm gonna speak more to the audience and to the councilors. You know, the biggest thing that we have right now is our kids and there's a, I'm gonna take it from the beginning as to, we complain about our kids in front of video games, social media, on their computers. Now our kids are taken to the streets on their bikes. And again, the residents are complaining. Now I'm gonna bring it back to the city council as to the fact that we don't have a single bike park, skateboard park, any type of park for these kids to play. So while we're complaining about the kids wooing in and out of the lanes, they're now, they're out here, now they're being active. I think it's great that our kids start riding bikes to school. Maybe they will stop all this bus transportation on the PBTA, I'm not rushing. But we need to discuss this because I know it's been in front of the mayor. I know it's been kicked back a few times. My concern is that, yeah, I just addressed the, the, the Good Handbook. That last, the last one before it was revised talked about in depth about the laws about kids having to wear helmets. We can't be out here arresting our kids if, one, they don't know the bike laws. How many of you guys know the bike laws of what you could do on the streets and off the streets? We can't expect our 12-year-olds, 13-year-olds, 14-year-olds, 15-year-olds, 16-year-olds to know the bike laws when there's no license or permit for them to obtain one and it's not sold with a, with a bike or anything like that. That is something that we need to talk about when it comes to healthy initiative. So I would like to see, I, I am happy that we have a dog park initiative, but I would like to see a skateboard park initiative. I would like to see that. And there has to be some way that we could actually get that. And I bring it back to our president. If we could get something like that or a committee or somebody would like to chair or even the school committee, that kind of hopped that out. And also, our high schools could also have their bike things. I mean, you know, our inner-city kids are always suffering when suburban kids get to ride bikes and do the same thing, but they get the brunt of it. And now we got kids being arrested because they're traveling to Chicopee to go to the only bike park to make it back to the north end. I, I don't think that's right, thank you.
Thank you, Yolanda. Just very briefly, I want to say to you that I certainly understand your concern and there's been some of my constituents, especially at 16 Acres, that have said the very same thing that you have. And I think to begin the conversation, if, if you would like, we can schedule a meeting specifically inviting Pat Sullivan into the room to begin the discussion. I don't know what the result will be or how long that might take, but it has to start somewhere, so.
Right, and then from what I hear, I actually went on the Springfield website and read through it and it actually says that in the parks, it is prohibited to ride bikes or skateboards. So where do we expect our kids to ride their bikes?
If it's prohibited, and it's a hundred dollar fine. Two or $300 fine for anybody to ride a bike in a park and rec department.
Please contact me and then we'll schedule a time, please. All right.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the next question. I'm sorry, counselor, but we're short on time and I want to make sure that we stay on schedule. So if we can have the next question and if you could follow up with Yolanda later, that would be great.
If I have to pay the guy to stay after eight, I think it's important that I just, answer her question on May, it's gonna be quick. On May 19th, Lincoln School, PVPC and a, a bunch of community organizations are doing a biking kind of day. It's from 11 to 4. It's, they're gonna be cutting down from Lincoln to Calhoun Park on both sides, bike lanes, they're gonna make a man-made. And we're gonna be giving out free bikes, free helmets, free, also free pads. So just spread the word, there's more information to come and I'm gonna let the gentleman. That exactly what you're talking about? There's gonna be different tables. And if that's something that you want to work on as an initiative, I will work with you and we can give that, that stuff out at that. It's basically gonna be organic and I, I, I recommend that you get involved with them. I can put you in contact with them and that's exactly what they're gonna be doing.
Hello, my name is James Johnson. I live in the McKnight neighborhood. I'm not originally from Springfield, but I've traveled up and down the East Coast. I've been just about all over the world. And one of the reasons why I picked to live in Springfield is because I, you know, for fun, went to school at Stick and I saw how this is supposed to be the city of innovation and the diverse community and stuff. I also love all the food scene that's here in Springfield, the different neighborhoods you can go through. And I've come to make a lot of friends and people who have, who reside here from different backgrounds and stuff. As a person who moved to Western Mass, yes, I'm gonna get to it. As a person who moved to Western Mass, I came out, it was hard for somebody who doesn't know the area to find a place to call home. I kind of got passionate and a little bit out of turn with that because one of the things I do like is the law. You know, I'm not a stickler for it. But, you know, one of the things, I, I hate to see you guys get pigeonholed into making a passionate response into what somebody's saying. And so, one of the things I, I would love that the people who are out here today is I caution you guys when your responses to stuff that people are saying because I feel like one of the biggest issues that we do is we get out on social media, which has happened in the past. I'm not saying any officials here are guilty of it. And they respond back to somebody else who's a reporter when they're saying something that's kind of, kind of intuitive to the city. We'll just take the Dr. Seuss thing. And we all know how, what Dr. Seuss means to the city of Springfield. But then you had a teacher out here who wanted to, in another school librarian, make a comment to it and then members responded back to that and stuff. This is one of the reasons I moved out here is because of Dr. Seuss, the Basketball Hall of Fame. I knew nothing about Springfield. And I, my first time out was actually on Worthington Street, you know? And as a person who mainly goes to Boston, I was like, oh my God, I have to call my friends. I was like, listen, there's a diverse community out here, you know? I went to all other neighborhoods and my thing to you guys is that, hey, keep Springfield great. And when I say keep Springfield great, I, I, I really want you guys to be out there and look for innovations versus the things that are done the same way. The same way that you guys came out there and you made pitches when you were running for your spots and stuff. And that's why, one of the reasons I went to come and tell Jesse thank you and even Hearst, because I remember some of the stuff that he had said during his campaign. People were talking about their different positions and there were different reasons I liked each one of you guys. And I actually go through the minutes to see what you guys vote on and what you don't vote on. And I actually look up the different bills that people actually in the state level pass and don't pass. And so when I do say something to somebody, I do research it and stuff, you know? So my biggest thing to you guys is put the same amount of homework into some of the stuff that you guys are talking about. And that's the biggest thing I want you guys to do because the biggest impact that's gonna affect this city is the number one is the kids, right? People move to neighborhoods, they don't move for housing. They move there because they want jobs. They want great communities and education for their kids. So every time they talk about this housing initiative and stuff, it has to touch a good field for nonprofits and stuff who get the money for it. But I moved up here for a job and then I bought a house. And so what we need to do is work on, on the housing in the neighborhood so people can buy houses and stuff and have real affordable housing. So stop with the, let's make this low income and let's start with getting people jobs. Then you don't have to worry about the low income and then we can make the housing affordable for the people. A guy, I can give you my house, but I'm sure most of you can't afford the power bill or the oil bill that comes along with it. But yet you can afford to buy it by a bank note, but when the other stuff that comes with it and the house breaks, the guy quoted me $82,000 to replace my porch, okay? That's the porch. I said, are you building me a house? He goes, no, welcome to McKnight, that's how much it's gonna cost for your porch, all right?
Thank you for your comment. All right, next comment, please.
Okay, I know that you wanted to end this, so I'm gonna be very quick and very brief. I'm Tracy Whitfield. So I'm piggybacking off of what Gary said. With all due respect, Mr. Twigs, shot spotters wasn't his answer. He did not have any money to pay for his wounds. We have shot spotter activations, we got, hold on, I'm not done. We have, we got funding for more shot spotter activations. What he was looking for, Gary, is a victim fund, okay? We have state reps here that can help with a victim fund for folks that don't have the insurance or the coverage that are victims. And we need to think outside of the box. You're not here to talk about the same things that we always talk about. I've heard every single question before. I've heard every single response before while we were all running. And I just want to say to listen to the people because talking about the guns is not helping his situation. He needs some fun, he needs some help and support. And so that's what needed to be addressed at that moment. And I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you so much, Tracy.
Welcome to Ward Four, Councilman Twigs and others. Welcome to Ward Four. My name is Richard Johnson and I'm born and raised right here in Ward Four. Thank you, thank you for coming to Ward Four. School committee. I recently became aware of a, an app that is Say Something app and it's for young people in school. So that when they identify folks who are about to lose their mind or, or having some real challenges, somebody can say something without having to actually approach a teacher, a principal or a police officer in the school, which is a whole nother dance. And, and make sure that folks are aware of what, what this person's challenges might be so that we might be able to bring some support around these young people before things happen. Councilman Twigs and Councilman Williams specifically with regard to Ward Four and Five and the city's host agreement with the casino and the discretionary funds that the mayor will be able to allocate. I'm hoping that you guys are thinking about a plan that's gonna be, that's going to allow for equitable distribution. Now we have blight and, and dilapidation all through both of these wards. And I'm hopeful that these beautiful parks that we have within these wards might get a bench or two so that the folks who live in the neighborhood can sit out in the parks of their neighborhoods like, like I can do when I go visit my sister up in 16 Acres or, or if I go way out to East Forest Park, I can sit on a bench in a park and not necessarily have to bring my, my fold-out chair with me. That's something that you can address that improves the quality of life for people. Last thing I want to say is this. We often talk about our young people in this city but, and we think about how it is that we address these challenges year to year when the summer and the warmer months roll around. And I gotta tell you, you gotta do more to deal with some of our marginalized kids. The kids who have access to things, yes, we need to pay attention, but we've got a bunch of marginalized kids that don't, never get a shot at a summer job, ever. And so when you go back to your spaces, we really need to think about, okay, Gary got shot driving down the street, right? And some of these young people got accesses to guns where they ain't got no business to have access to guns. And they wouldn't think about having access to guns if they had alternatives that make a difference in their lives. And I just want to encourage you not to walk away from here thinking that, okay, you go to Mason Square and you look out and you see Hill McKnight or you see the McKnight Neighborhood Council come out and you don't see the people who live up and down on, on, uh, 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 Virgin, Virgin Circle or Ree Village. But guess what? They do live there. And they do require some assistance and they do require some attention. Not just when their kids is being locked up, but when their kids is being at the top of their classes. Let's shine the light on them and say, yeah, they're doing some constructive things in these neighborhoods. And I gotta tell you, you're a great disappointment. You truly are a great disappointment because Dr. Twigs, and I call you doctor because I honor all of the things you've done throughout history. But let me tell you something, when I ride down Hancock Street and Walnut Street and I see where folks have, have put up junkyards and you don't even require them to put up a, a tarp. You don't even require to put up a tarp. That's an insult. When we got, when we got trees growing up in vacant lots, it's, it's just an insult. And you wonder why these kids, you know, throw down their, their rubbish whenever they walk down the street, you know? And I can go right there at the corner of Roosevelt, right across the street that little muffler shop. And guess what? When the wind blows or when it's 90 degrees, they don't even got to put up a tarp on the fence, you know? And ain't none of y'all saying nothing about it, you know? But they get ready to build a incinerator, and you get to Hill McKnight, and you get these other folks that go out there, they raise hell, and they call, Lady Callas Center every day. Yeah, the squeaky wheel gets the, gets the juice, right? But guess what? Some folks, they don't know how to squeal. They don't like to get up and make a bunch of noise. That's why we elect you to go there. That's why we elect you to go there, so that you could say, okay, I know their pain. They don't call me every day, but I know their pain. Speak to it, but do more than speak to it. Justin, when you talk to the mayor, speak truth to power or the illusion thereof.
All right. Thank you so much for your comment. All right. I'm going to give some 30-second responses. I know that some school committee members wanted to say a few words, and then I'll kick it over to Councilor Twigs.
Your opinion is absolutely right. The question for us is, somebody mentioned a little far side. If you find an issue, you got to tell us. Richard, I know you're absolutely right. I mean, you're right down the street here. And so the question that I raise is, all of these councilors, you got to tell them. If they don't see it, they don't know it. I mean, it's only so much they can do because they're part-time. We don't have full-time employees. The city is the full-time high for us. And when you tell us that something is going wrong, we go to the city and say, hey, a constituent told me this. What you doing about it? That's how it works. Now, you can yell at it, that's all you want, but your point's well taken. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Any last comments?
I just want to say, Mr. Johnson, first of all, thank you for all you do in our community. And I can call you, Dr. Johnson, because we all look up to you for what you've done. And your statements here tonight, again, as I mentioned to some other folks, this is exactly why we're doing this. Your point is well taken. And I, you know, I didn't know about that dirt pile that you're referring to, and the sites on Hancock Street, I'll be in touch about getting the addresses for them. Because this is the type of thing now where, as your representatives, we can reach out to the appropriate city department heads and get to work on those issues for them. So, you know, you can always be in touch in other methods, but that's why we're doing these meetings. It is important for folks to come out and let us know. And we know that, you know, we need to do more on community engagement. This is the first step. This is the first time we're doing this. But we're going to continue moving forward in that same spirit.
All right. Thank you so much, folks, for your questions and comments. It got a little dicey in the middle, but we made it. We muddled through. If you have some lingering, burning questions, feel free to speak to anyone here at the end of the program. And I just want to welcome back up City Councilor Jesse Letterman to say some closing remarks.
Well, folks, I actually want to give, I know we have, just, we're very pressed for time, but I do want to give my colleagues a chance to actually, to give their final thoughts on this evening. So we'll start off with councillor, or we'll start off with Senator Welch and move this way. Just very quick, guys, 10, 15 seconds on this evening.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out. It was a very spirited debate. It's great to hear your comments and your concerns, and we'll certainly do our best to address those. I would say, please contact our office. We can get your information if you do have a specific question. But tonight was a good night, and it's great to see so much passion and involvement in our city. Thank you.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. I want everyone to realize that as far as state rep Bud Williams, I live in the district. This is our first term. Eastern Avenue will be paved. Harriet Tubman's sign will be up. We are putting, we do see the potholes. We do have money coming. We just got there, guys. My phone number is 413-316-4743. Call me at 7:00 in the morning till 9:00 at night if there is an issue, and I will address it instantly.
We just thank you very much for your time, your concern, and just hearing what you have to say. I am eager to work with anybody who wants to do more for our education of our kids. I believe that the key to safety in our neighborhoods is often making sure our kids are educated appropriately. So we are available. My email address is latoniaforschools.com. You can look on my website as well. Actually, latoniaforschools, yeah, dot com is my website. I know, keep coming, Google me. Keep coming, Google me. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you again to Councilor Letterman for putting this on and all of the other partners that collaborated to make this night happen. A special thank you to Shanique, who I thought did a really great job moderating, considering everyone, right, everyone's passion. Tonight was really informative for me because, I mean, you get to just learn and hear about all of the various things. Dr. Twigs. So, I was talking. So nonetheless, it was extremely informative. And like Latonia said, we are here and willing to work with any one of you. And that it's not, it's truly about education, but the impact is long-term, right? It has so much to do with economic development and the future of our city. So even though you might not have kids in the district, you have to understand that these kids are going to be the future residents of this city. So we are here, we're approachable, we're accessible. You can Google us, and you'll find us, and we'll be available. And here's Dr. Twigs.
Thank you. Thank you very much for all of you coming out here. This is a good means to have a dialogue and allow you to fuss at us and also tell us about what you want us to do. And so my kudos goes out to my son, Uptown Jesse. When he called me about it, I said, it's a great idea. And so let's do it. And so here we are, and we'll be back.
Everybody have a good night. If you want to get in touch with me, my email address is agomez@springfieldcityhall.org, right? Dot com, apologize. And I want to encourage you guys, when more of these things come up, please bring a friend. Emotions are necessary because if you don't, I'm going to keep it absolutely real. If you don't come for our lives, we're not going to move and we're not going to really respond. So legit, please come to these meetings, hold us to the fire, hold us accountable because if we don't hear about it, we won't react about it. So God bless you guys. Be home, get home safe. I know it's a little snowy out there. And again, contact me at Gomez@, oh wait, agomez@cityhall.com.
Well, thank you, everybody, for coming out. But I'd like to say I think it's a two-way street. If we did not take our job seriously, if we were not interested in what you had to say and how we can help you after you say it, we would not be here tonight. So I'm happy you came. You should be happy we came. And I'd like to say that McKnight never disappoints.
Thank you for everyone. I really just have to say that you were heard more than anything else. And I don't make it a habit to describe my position as a part-time position because it has full-time responsibilities. And while I do have a nine-to-five, I feel that there's a time after that where we are addressing our constituents' concerns.